Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of September 15th, 2015. Roll call, please.
Mary Lou Johnson.
Present.
Kevin Chase.
President.
Rick Biasodi.
Here.
Sue Jamishra.
Here.
Harry Peterson.
Here.
Joe Sammet.
Here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, would you please lead in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Chase. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of August 18th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion when you approve those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item is communications, please.
Chair Johnson, I have a couple of items tonight. First item is to bring to your attention that staff will be recommending the continuance of Item 5C. We've had an opportunity to talk further with our police department staff about that particular item, and we have some new information, so we'd like to continue that item, so when we come to it, we'll be recommending continuance. And also tonight, I'd like to recognize our new senior planner, Michael Smith, joins us. Michael is a senior planner joining the staff. He's been with us about three and a half weeks. He comes to us from the city and county of San Francisco, and he has extensive experience in mixed-use development. He's got a master's degree in city and regional planning, and we are very delighted to have him on our staff. So, Michael Smith.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
Pleased to have you.
And with that, we have no other communication items tonight. I would point out, on the first item, 5A, 173 San Benito Avenue, the chair may have a need to recuse herself on that.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item is item number three, which is public comment. And this is for anyone that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. So is there anyone out there in the audience that would like to speak on something other than what's on the agenda? All right, moving right along. And the next is announcements for conflict of interest. Do any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest? Yes.
On Item 5A, just to be clear, Matt, I believe you checked to see if I'm too close to that property on San Benito.
Correct. You are outside of the 500-foot area.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to be clear for the public.
There's no need to recuse yourself, correct?
Thank you.
Right, anyone else? All right, I will recuse myself, and Commissioner Chase, if you can take the lead.
Sure. My pleasure.
And the reason I am excusing myself is because I am within 500 feet of the property.
Let's just slide the gavel right over here to make it official. It was easy to it now. Okay, so this is, we have a request for a use permit to allow the construction of a new two-family residence which exceeds the maximum permitted floor area guideline of .55 per Section 12, 230A1 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Would you like to give us a little report, Matt?
Thank you, and good evening. As indicated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to construct a new two-family residence that exceeds the maximum permitted floor area guideline. Subject site's located on the northwest corner of San Benito Avenue and San Anselmo Avenue. This site was previously part of a larger parcel of land that measured 11,341 square feet in total area, and based on the underlying property records, the applicant applied for and obtained a lotline adjustment, thereby leaving an interior lot measuring 5,012 square feet and the subject corner lot which measures 6,329 square feet. The interior lot has since been developed with a two-story, single-family dwelling, and the proposal before us tonight calls for the construction of a new two-family residence on the subject corner lot. The new two-family residence would be a two-story structure containing two residential units. The first floor of each unit would contain a living room, kitchen, half-bathroom, and a two-car garage. The second floor of each unit would contain two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee at their August meeting. At that meeting, the Architectural Review Committee forwarded the project on to the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation, and there were some staff recommendations, which I'll highlight. The first recommendation was to center the second-story bedroom window located directly above the porch along the southern elevation. Alternatively, incorporate another window for a total of two windows along that portion of the lot. The second recommendation was to incorporate horizontal hardy plank siding along the second-story southern elevation. There was also a recommendation to include wood window trim on all exterior elevations. Lastly, there was a recommendation to ensure each elevation was accurately labeled by its own orientation. Additionally, the applicant has included a green building statement which highlights the different methods that will be used during the construction phase of the project. Additionally, I would like to point out that the applicant has conducted some site cleanup, and the site today currently does not contain any weeds and is free of all debris. As indicated, a use permit is required for exceeding the maximum permitted floor area guideline. I'd like to point out that proposal meets all other development standards, including lot coverage, setbacks, and the height requirement. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the overall design and scale of the neighborhood. As you know, this neighborhood has a mixture of residential unit types, consists of one and two-story, single-family homes, and many multifamily residential structures. Additionally, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the residential design guidelines. The exterior materials consist of a stucco finish on the first floor and a horizontal hardy board on the second floor, and these are similar to materials that are found throughout the immediate neighborhood. I'd like to point out that the applicant has also incorporated step backs from the first story below, which is a bizarre articulation technique outlined within the residential design guidelines. Specifically, the second-story front elevation is set back between three feet and six feet from the first story below. Portions of the second-story south side elevation are flush with the first story below, while the remaining portion is set back two feet. A portion of the second-story north side elevation overhangs the first-story wall with the remaining portion set back seven feet. And lastly, the second-story rear elevation is set back between five and 21 feet from the first story below. I'd also like to point out that the applicant has incorporated two prominent front entry porch features. Along the southern elevation, there's a porch measuring six feet deep by 14 feet 3-inch is wide, and along the eastern elevation, there's a porch measuring six feet deep by 19, 5 inches wide. We did send a courtesy notice to property owners adjacent to the subject site and the required 300-foot legal notice. Staff did not receive any comments regarding this proposal. Overall, staff supports the project and finds that the new two-story, two-family dwelling is consistent with the overall design and scale of the neighborhood and the residential design guidelines, and we would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project based on findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 26. This concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Matt. Commissioners, have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Is the applicant present? Would you mind stepping to the deans and just giving us a quick little rundown of your project, if you would?
Good evening. My name is Costa, this is Spheros, and, well, basically what he said. We're a two-story duplex, two bedrooms upstairs, two and a half bath, both units with two-car garage, prominent landscaping in the front, and, you know, we hope to have another beautiful project on our hands and spruce up that neighborhood a little bit.
Oh, very good. Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I really like the one, the house that you already built. It looks very nice. I don't live too far from there, so I drive by it all the time. The only question I have is on addresses. Are you going to have one on San Benito and one on San Anselmo?
That is correct.
Or they both have a?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion, the motion, whatever.
Yep, through the chair.
Commissioner Smith.
Yep, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Use Permit 14-014 based on findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 26.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? All right, passes with a 10-day appeal period, and if somebody would be kind enough to bring in Chair Johnson. Thank you. You're welcome.
It's a request for a use permit to establish a new 699-square-foot restaurant within a gas station per Sections 1280, 080 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Paula Bradley, the planner for the project at 2001 Rollingwood Drive. This is a request for a use permit to establish a new 699-square-foot restaurant within a gas station, and it's in this commercial neighborhood district on the corner of Rollingwood Drive and Sneeth Avenue. It's a 24,829-square-foot site with the Chevron gas station and also a 2,051-square-foot one-story building that has two commercial spaces. One of them is the Chevron Extra Mile Convenience Store, and the other space is vacant at this time, and the project is proposed to go into that vacant space. On-site, there are also 11 parking spaces. There are seven existing, and four will be added for this use, a total of 11. And then also, there's a large canopy for the gas pumps, and there's also a wireless facility on this site. The applicant's proposing to legalize the removal of the auto service bays, which are no longer there, and instead, it's been modified to have a door and windows for the restaurant. And the seating for the restaurant will be, there's only four to six seats. Most of the food preparation will be for takeout, and this use should not cause any kind of a problem for the neighborhood as the restaurant uses and the convenience store are basically there for the patrons of the gas station. There will only be two employees that work at the food operation at one time, and the hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. And there are no exterior changes proposed, and they'll just be applying for building permit for tenant improvements. And there's also a condition number eight, if there does occur any kind of a negative impact from traffic to the neighborhood, that the community development director can call this project back for Planning Commission review of the permit. So a quick-service restaurant of this type is usually allowed as a right in this district. However, a use permit is required because it's combined with the gas station use on the same site. So the exterior changes, the exterior of the restaurant is continuous with the convenience store that looks like one building and is, and it's consistent with what one would expect in a commercial district. Staff supports the project and recommends that the Planning Commission approve Use Permit 15-005 based on the findings 1 through 5 and conditions 1 through 15. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report. Is there any questions for staff?
Yep, through the chair.
Commissioner Smith.
I seem to remember back when they came to us for this remodel, I don't know how many years ago, one of the items that they were going to do at that time was to remove the service bays. I remember we had a discussion about service bays and the fact that most gas stations don't have them anymore. So did they, did they not have approval to remove service bays, and they did remove them, and that's an issue? Or, because it says in the report that all issues have been abated, with the exception of the exterior alterations to the building which resulted in the removal of the automotive service bays. So my understanding, and I'm probably wrong, but my understanding is that when they were here, again, I don't know how many years ago that was, we approved them to build the convenience store and remove the automotive base, service base. So did we do that, or did you find in any historical stuff that we approved that, or?
I might be able to clarify that somewhat through the chair. There was, under the previous owner, there was a fairly extensive history of various code violations, and at one time, they did make the exterior changes to the project without permits. So the approval of this use permit to remove the service bay doors will clear that outstanding code violation, and the new owner has worked very diligently with code enforcement trying to improve the property and to clear any code violations on the property.
So the issue isn't so much that they removed the service bays as they removed the service bay doors and did exterior alterations to cover those doors up? Is that, is that the problem?
The project allows the restaurant and the changes that were made to the exterior of the building.
So I guess my question really is, because I must not be explaining it correctly, they made alterations to that project. As I understand it, we approved the removal of the service bays the last time they were here, I guess it was a previous owner, and the issue now is not so much that they removed the service bays, but that they put in all-new siding to close up the area where the service bays doors were, and they did that without a permit. Is that correct?
Through the chair, if we can provide some clarification. There was work done at this property without the benefit of a building permit. It then went into a code enforcement action. We've been working with the property owner for some time to resolve that code enforcement action. Code enforcement is now at a point where code enforcement issues have been addressed, so our focus now is this use permit. And, Michael, you may have some additional information to add to that.
Yes, Michael Smith, the Planning Department. In my research for the property, I found that the Extra Mile store that's on the site right now, what did come to this Planning Commission at that time, I believe was around 2001, and that the project at that time was supposed to have two service bays. Those two service bays are not there right now, and there's no permit on record to show that they ever removed those service bays and created the storefront. So this project is before you because it requires a use permit to establish a restaurant within a gas station, but in the process, they will also be getting a proper permit for the work that they've already done to create the storefront in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
My thinking is that there may be possibility of increased trash at the property with this addition of a restaurant, and it'll be very hard, if not impossible, to figure out where it's coming from because you've got a restaurant, a gas station, and a mini mart, and it, would staff want to, think it would be reasonable to add a condition that the applicant shall tour the site daily and pick up trash, no matter what the origin of the trash is?
Through the chair, there is a condition number nine that states the restaurant operator shall ensure that garbage and recyclables are properly stored outside the appropriate garage, garbage enclosure. There's also a condition requiring graffiti removal. There's a condition number five, the applicant shall conduct regular maintenance of the site to maintain the premises and remove debris and litter at the front and rear of the building. So with those two conditions, staff believes that it's pretty clearly stated that the applicant will be required to keep the site free of debris, but...
About if it said throughout debris at the front, rear, and throughout the property.
Again, through the chair. We would have no problem adding that for that clarification. I think that staff has done a good job of trying to address the concern about litter and debris, but that additional clarification would be fine, and we could certainly modify Condition 5 to add that language.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
One more? I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. Okay. Since there's nothing in here in the report from the police department, I'll assume that things like security cameras, the security system is already in place, which may be part of what we approved back in 2001. With that thing being open, this being open until 10:00 p.m., I think that there should be security cameras or a system working there. But again, I don't know if there is currently anything.
So why don't we address that concern in this way? We would suggest, I would suggest, adding a condition that would be to the effect that a security camera system shall be added to the premises as directed by the chief of police. And in that way, we get the police department's input in terms of what that system might look like, where the cameras would be positioned, and how many.
Thank you.
Would that work for you?
That's great, yeah. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase?
I'm going to assume that the applicant is probably here, and if indeed the applicant is here, maybe he can answer that question as far as security cameras are concerned, because I can't imagine having a gas station without a security camera nowadays, anyway. So maybe we won't even have to go that far. Maybe we'll have our answers, questions answered earlier than later.
Again, through the chair, that would be fine. We should bring the applicant forward, but in any case, it would be helpful, I think, to have a check-in with the chief of police to make sure whatever's there currently is to the satisfaction of the San Bruno Police Department. Would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Bia Scotty.
Thank you. Now, reading through this report, I haven't seen anything about signage on this property. Is that going to be handled separately, or what's the status of that? Because looking at the storefront, it's just begging for an opportunity to advertise this new service.
Yes, through the chair, the applicant would be required to apply for a sign permit to install any additional signage to the site.
Okay, so there's none, none's been applied for as of yet?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, through the chair, if you'd like clarification, that is a standard requirement, but just to assure that there's no question for the applicant, a condition could be added that prior to the installation of any exterior signage, that a sign permit be obtained from the city of San Bruno, something along those lines, just to make sure that there's no question about that.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
If the applicant, please step forward, state your name, and please provide us a description of your project.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for time. My name is Ally Mahmudi. I'm here representing Resum Mahmudi. So it's basically, as I said, a small restaurant on the property, two to four-seating for anyone who would like to stay, but most of the food is going to be geared towards to-go atmosphere, so there won't be a lot of traffic on the property. And in regards to some of the questions that were mentioned earlier, Commissioner Peterson, we do have, our employees currently, they are told that multiple times throughout the day, they're supposed to walk around the property, ensure there's no litter, and make sure the trash bags are empty and everything's clean to be a good area for our customers to come, so they'd like to return. Commissioner Sammet, we do have cameras at the location currently, and we would most likely, once the, everything is finished at the restaurant, add another camera system within there as well. So we have cameras both in the Extra Mile and next door in the restaurant itself. And Commissioner Bia Scotty?
Yes, Scotty.
Sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, that's all right.
In regards to the sign one, I believe on the conditions for approval, Number 10, it says that we must receive a city sign permit for installation of these signs as already. I'm not sure if there's anybody else I should mention.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bia Scotty.
So from what I'm hearing, the way you're describing your business, you run not only the gas station, but the Extra Mile. So this will just be in addition to the operation you have already going, is that correct? It's not a separate standalone business in that space?
The business will be owned by the same entities, but as the gas and the Extra Mile will be, for goddamn purposes, it'll be run separately, but they'll be managed by essentially the same individuals.
So we can expect the same individuals to manage and clean up garbage and do for the entire site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to compliment you on your response to our concerns, and I hope your business runs well. I think it sounds well-planned.
Thank you.
Any last questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up to the public, however. I'll close the public hearing and bring you back to Planning Commission discussion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Use Permit 15-005 based on findings of fact 1 through 3, conditions of approval 1 through 15.
Through the, through the chair, before we get a second, can I ask staff a question?
Certainly.
I know this, this came up a couple of months ago, and I think it was Kevin that asked the question about the item that the developer shall indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the city, its officers, employees, and agents, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Why is it that part of this, of this application? Is it, is that not something that we do on commercial applications, or is it just simply missed?
That, that requirement is typically picked up in our applications, and also, it's when the applicant goes for a building permit, that'll be picked up there as well in terms of the applications. It is sometimes added to our conditions of approval. We should probably be more consistent about having that added. We do have it as part of our application when they sign an application to process through the city, whether it's an application for a planning approval or a building permit. But we'll talk about that internally and probably make sure that we're more consistent about using that condition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Also, in terms of the motion, there were a couple of suggested modifications, and the applicant is correct in terms of Condition 10, the signage matter is addressed in terms of a proposed condition by staff. But I think there was a recommendation in terms of Condition 5 to add language that the maintenance, the pickup of litter would be throughout the site. And I think there was also a suggestion that perhaps that the camera system on-site be evaluated and updated perhaps to the satisfaction of the... camera system on site be evaluated and updated perhaps to the satisfaction of the police chief. So if there's a desire as part of the motion to modify conditions, you may want to do that.
Will she make her, put those under consideration?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, sure.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is a ten-day appeal process before any action can take place on this project. Thank you. Item number C, five C, twelve thirty Al Camino Real. I know that it'll be continued. Should we open the public hearing for any discussion, recognizing if there isn't any public out here? Do we need to formally?
Chair Johnson, I would look for an action by the commission for continuance. So if you could open the matter, our staff recommendation is for continuance based on the fact that we have received some new information, additional information. We feel, based on that information, we'd like to update our staff report and our recommendation. We expect to come back to this body at your next meeting with an updated staff report and a recommendation. But in terms of a formal continuance, if you could open the matter and then take a formal action in terms of continuance, I would appreciate it.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Like to add, staff, in the past, in instances, instances of continuance such as this one, the chair has also opened and closed the public hearing to allow for any public who may have come for the, for the listing tonight. Is that something you would want to do?
I would, I would want to do that. There's nobody in attendance right now, but that would be standard practice.
Should be on the record.
I agree.
That's right. And that was really my question, to see if that part would be open. So this, twelve thirty Al Camino Real, number Q, is a request for use permit to allow alcohol beverages sales in conjunction with the restaurant, first, excuse me, for chapters twelve eighty-four to ten, twelve eighty-six, I'm sorry, twelve ninety-six, one ninety C. And staff report, please.
As the staff indicated, we would be recommending continuance of this item this evening. We've received new information, and we would expect to bring this item back to you at your next regularly scheduled meeting next month in October. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
I'll make a motion that we continue use permit one five zero one four till the next commission meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Through the chair. So do we open the public hearing now or later?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you should open that public hearing first.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then take your action.
That's what I'm here for. Serve and protect.
So we will officially open the public hearing. Seeing that there aren't any members of the public, we'll also close the public hearing, bring it back to planning commission discussion.
And I'll reintroduce my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, thank you.
All right. Item D is discussion.
First item is a city staff discussion, and item A, first item, we are looking for volunteers for the October Architectural Review Committee meeting. So I would appreciate three volunteers for that meeting. Commissioner Sammett? That's one. I need two more. Vice Chair Chase, thank you. One more, please.
I will.
Commissioner Biassadi, thank you very much. And then we do have an informational item I'd like to talk to you a little bit about. I think at the DAS, you'll notice that there's a flyer, a handout, about this San Bruno Walk and Bike Plan. And this is a very, very exciting planning effort that is recently underway here in San Bruno. This past year, the City of San Bruno received a one-hundred-thousand-dollar matching grant to prepare its first comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian master plan, a citywide master plan to improve the efficiency and safety of people moving around on bikes and walking throughout the community. City has hired a consultant. We're working with a consultant out of San Francisco with extensive experience in this area of work. We've begun some initial research and work. There's going to be quite a bit of outreach over the next month or two in terms of trying to gather information from people about existing conditions within the community, in terms of bicycle infrastructure, walking infrastructure. The next step, we'll kind of be looking at, how could we improve our systems here in this community? There'll be a draft plan. There'll be public meetings and hearings over the next ten or eleven months or so. And so we're really looking for people to become involved in this effort to help us identify existing conditions, how we can make our community more bikeable, more walkable, more safe. And on our city's website, there's information that you can go to and actually register comments about the existing system. There's also on the city's website, a site you can go to to register, to receive information about upcoming meetings and, and events. So I would encourage people within the community to become involved, to register, to register, to obtain notifications of upcoming events and meetings and hearings. There'll be meetings before the planning commission, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the city council, et cetera. And we would hope to be to a point of having a draft plan sometime early next year, and by, by, say, spring, late spring of next year, hopefully, we're at a point where we're looking at perhaps adopting a plan. The idea is to have this plan in place and really use it as an opportunity to then go forward with individual projects, development projects, improvement projects, to upgrade our streets for bicycles, for pedestrians, et cetera. So it's an exciting time, and please take a look at the handout we provided for you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I am B as planning commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Has there been any applications received for the planning commission opening?
Yeah, I'm very happy to say that we have four applications for the planning commission opening, and those applicants have completed the exercise material that was developed by a subcommittee working on this. And their application materials are to our city council subcommittee. I'm expecting that probably over the next couple of weeks or so, we'll get some feedback and direction on, on the final selection process. And I'm hoping that perhaps as soon as your next meeting in October, perhaps, we would be in a position to welcome a new planning commissioner. So we have four applicants. Their materials are in. Those materials are to the council subcommittee, and it's very possible that we'll be welcoming a new planning commissioner at your October meeting.
Great.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Any other, planning commission discussion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Before the meeting, I was joking with Commissioner Peterson about his diligence in reading the staff reports and his correctness. And I just wanted to apologize and say, we do appreciate the efforts that you do, and I appreciate the clarity that you bring to some of the reports. It's really, it's really good to have. You know, some of us don't have time to always read it as thoroughly, and it's nice to have that. So I apologize and thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to say I, along with Chair Johnson's recommendation, I give my observations directly to the staff, so it doesn't take up meeting time.
Thank you. There are no other comments or discussion? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thanks.